Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for being here. Is there any -- we have a couple of members of the public, I think? No, okay, so we have no members of the public, so. But thank you, staff, for all showing up for the budget workshop. We really appreciate it. Yes. Let's see now. We are going to welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council Goal Setting Workshop. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. Public comments are limited to items on the workshop agenda. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card and hand it to the city clerk. I'll now call the meeting of the Agoura Hills Budget Workshop. It's the special meeting of the Agoura Hills City Council of Wednesday, June 12, 2024, 4:00 p.m. I would like to defer to Mayor Pro Tem Penny Sylvester to do the flag salute today. Thank you. We will now defer to our city clerk for a roll call.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Anstead.
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez. Councilmember Wolf. Mayor Pro Tem Sylvester.
Yeah.
Mayor Buckley-Weber.
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have a quorum with councilmembers Klein Lopez and Wolf absent.
Thank you very much. Now I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
This is City Councilmember Chris Anstead. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem Sylvester seconds.
Thank you very much, and I'll defer to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anstead.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sylvester.
Yeah.
Mayor Buckley-Weber.
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval three to zero.
Thank you very much. This section is reserved for public comments relating to the goal-setting workshop. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley-Weber. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to discussion. We'll now move on to a discussion of the mid-cycle fiscal year 2023-2024 and 2024-2025 proposed budget review. I will now defer to City Manager Nathan Hamburger for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. This afternoon, we will be looking at the mid-cycle 2023-2024 and fiscal year 2024-2025 review of our proposed budget. As a reminder, this is the second year of our adopted two-year plan. And this afternoon, we're gonna -- we will move through the document and present different items and bring different information to the council. There are just a couple of items that we want to make sure that we get feedback on that would be included in the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. And just as a layout for our presentation this afternoon, we're going to start with Dave Chee of HDL. He's going to do a high-level review of our sales tax and property tax. I'm sorry, property tax. And then Diego Abanias is going to do our sales tax presentation. And then he'll go over the items in the budget for the council. As we move through this process, if you do have questions, please feel free to ask those, and we'll be glad to address that as we're moving through it. And with that, at the very end, we'll talk and discuss over the community outreach grant program and awards. And then all of those items would be included for consideration of adoption of the budget at your next meeting at the end of this month. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Finance, Diego Abanias, for the presentation.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Dave, are you online?
Dave? Give us a second. He's zooming in.
Diego?
Yes, Dave, can you hear us? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Very faintly.
Let me try, see if there's a way to turn it up.
If need be, Diego, we could jump ahead to the sales tax. We could come back to the property tax ones. Could Dave on if you like?
Okay. Can we switch presentations? Diego, I think I'm at full volume here.
Is that? Yeah, Dave, can you hear me? Yeah, if you could start, I've got the PowerPoint. We have the PowerPoint up. If you want me to, just let me know when you want me to move through slides. Anything that sounds muffled, I can clarify here for council if they've got any questions. But we can begin, please.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and advance the next slide. There we go. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. The -- we've done this presentation a couple of times, and, you know, you may recall from the prior presentations that in looking ahead to the revenues that will be seen in the coming years, we look to the inflation adjustment that's applied to the property tax valuations each year, as well as transfers of ownership, the city share, the one percent values recovered under Prop eight and unitary revenue. Just for perspective, the valuation estimate that we made last year, this is January of 2023, estimated the city's general fund revenue for this year to be $3.4 million. Based on the actual values for this year, the city's general fund revenues are expected to be $3.46 million. So the estimate last year ended up being very close, and the VLFAA estimate last year had been at $2.8 million, and the actual values came in at about $2.85 million. So again, the revenue estimates have traditionally been very close, not just for Agoura Hills, but in most of our client cities in LA County. Could you go to the next slide, please? Here, we're looking at the general fund estimate for '24-'25, so it's the next fiscal year. We start with the valuations from the current fiscal year. CPI growth on the parcels that aren't involved with Prop eight are going to add about $91 million. Transfers of ownership during 2023 will add about $93 million to the roll for this year. And this is just in the non-RDA portion of the city. Prop eight may actually show a slight reduction in value because the market values currently are just down very slightly, even though the value is still being added. When we look at single-family home median sale price values, in some neighborhoods, they're down very slightly. So we're estimating real property value for next year at about $5.4 billion, sorry. That we break that down also to add base share value at about $339 million. This is within the former project area, and it's the value that still generates revenue to the general fund. There's no non-unitary utility value. And when we break the values down into secured personal property and unsecured personal property that we hold even at the current values, we end up with an estimated value of $5.7 billion for next year. That's about 3.25% estimated growth for next year, which is a little lower than what you've traditionally grown at. In past years before bigger booms, you've been growing at about 4.7%. We expect that growth levels will be a little bit less than what we saw in the late '20 teens for at least another two or three years before they may start getting upwards of the 4% to 5% range. Based upon the city share of the 1% tax rate, we're estimating that the general fund revenues for next year, that's '24-'25, will be about $3.5 million. Unitary revenue will put in about another $51,000, and the county's admin fees will take away about $44,000. In the column to the right, we estimate your VLFAA revenue. That revenue is allocated along with property taxes, but it's really a revenue amount that grows each year based upon the percentage value growth within the entire city. So that's the value growth in all areas of the city, including the former project areas. And we're estimating that value growth to be 3.47%. And so we're estimating the current VLFAA, that's $2,849, to grow by just under $100,000 to $2.948 million in '24-'25. Could I have the next slide, Diego? Sales activity is a big driver in values, and I added this table just to give you a sense of where the sales have happened. This is just the number of sales that have occurred. And we're seeing the same pattern all over the state. The orange line that's at the top of the table, that's the highest of the several lines, is clearly higher than all the subsequent years. That's for -- those are the sales for 2021. And we've seen this typically all over the state. You know, the sales in 2021 and 2022 were typically higher than we've seen in prior years, and that's what we're seeing here. The blue line are the sales in 2023 that are adding to the roll values for next year. And one thing you'll notice is in the -- at the latter part of 2023, November and December, the number of sales was actually up over the 2021 -- I'm sorry, 2022 sales. So things are looking up a little bit, and the first part of 2024 sales are still down relative to the last three years. But we're starting to see some indication that the number of sales may be picking up. The growth in value may not be as strong as it was a couple of years ago, but the growth in the number of sales with modest increases in median sale prices should mean that the sales in 2024 will be a little more positive than they were in 2023. Next slide. Here, we're showing value growth over the next five years. Again, we're using the same methodology. One thing that you'll see is that the -- our estimate of transfers of ownership value growth, that's the fourth line down, for '24-'25, I mentioned earlier, we're estimating it at about $93.4 million. This is based upon the actual sales in 2023. We're expecting that to go up modestly for '25-'26, and then beginning in '26-'27, going out to '28-'29, the growth in value for sales is going up at a reasonably modest but fairly reasonable rate. Estimated property tax values overall, we're estimating to get up to close to 4% by '26-'27, getting up to just under 4% in '28-'29. We are taking a rather moderate view on what we think will happen over the next several years. We try not to be overly aggressive in our estimates, and we purposely take a conservative view on growth among personal property values particularly. We show those flat from year to year, even though it's -- it wouldn't be surprising for them to go up somewhat over the next five years. The VLFAA revenue estimates you see at the bottom mention we're estimating '24-'25 to be $2.9 million, and we're estimating that to continue to rise at a moderate rate to get to about $3.4 million in '28-'29. The next slide. Here's some general information. Total value growth in the city for '23-'24 was just under $300 million. The 38% of that was just due to the 2% inflation adjustment. And inflation is going to continue to hold pretty steady at the regular 2% inflation adjustment. We've had a few years in the last 10 years where inflation has been less than 2%, but we don't expect that to occur anytime in the next several years. Transfers of ownership in 2022 added $187 million to the current year roll, the '23-'24 roll, and that was about $20 million more than was added to the prior year roll from sales in 2021. Sales in 2023 are going to add $114 million to the rolls for '24-'25. Now, that's the -- for the entire city. That's not just the general fund portion of the city. But we're expecting sales growth to be more modest over the next couple of years before finally gathering some momentum. Again, a reiteration of how the VLFAA revenues grow based upon percentage value growth within the entire city. And again, we're also looking at the potential for some very modest Prop eight value reductions as median sale prices fluctuate a little bit from neighborhood to neighborhood. But the indications are that the overall values are going to regain a little momentum after the next couple of years. And any minor increases in Prop eight value reductions are likely to be recovered over the next couple of years. And I think that is about all I've got on the slides. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions from the council?
Any council members have any questions? I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Given scheduling conflict, our staff will be presenting the presentation for sales tax from HDL. I apologize for any technological issues in the previous presentation, but if you do have any questions, by all means, please go ahead and ask. This graph illustrates how the Agoura Hills sales tax of 9.5% is broken down. 1% goes to the city-county general fund, 3.9375 goes to the state general fund and other measures. And other measures receive a portion of the tax as well. When all these percentages are added up, they total to 9.5%. These graphs illustrate year-end trends. California's local once-in-sales and use tax receipts during the months of October through December were 2.5% lower than the same quarter last year. The fourth quarter is notably the highest sales tax generating quarter of the year and exhibited diminished year-over-year returns as consumers balance higher prices and financing costs with essential household needs. In the quarterly results graph, which is the top graph, you will see how the fourth quarter tends to get a bump due to the holiday spending. Last year's holiday shopping period, however, experienced lackluster sales, and most sectors saw reductions. Those sectors included home furnishings, women's apparel, shoe and electronics supplying stores, shoe appliance and restaurants being the most significantly impacted by consumers withholding any type of spending. The graph illustrating calendar year results illustrate how statewide calendar year 2023 ended with a 2.3% decline from 2022. Elevated inflation and interest rates led to higher cost of goods, resulting in consumers not spending as much as they had prior. And following multiple years of post-pandemic tax growth assisted by federal tax policy and temporary workplace accommodations, consumers reassess their economic conditions and limited purchasing. So we're seeing a lot of macroactivity affecting consumer behavior in sales tax all over the state and in the city. This graph here just illustrates how much of these industries, industry groups sort of were increasing in previous years, and toward the end of '23, all of them sort of took a dip toward some kind of decline. The lavender line, which is the restaurant and hotel one, you see the big dip in 2020 due to COVID and then somewhat of a slight increase, but pricing changes in consumer taste and other factors that played a role into it just stagnating over the last few years, or excuse me, at the end of last year. So in putting our operate -- what we consider for budget forecasting for '24-'25, we took into account interest rates, which are high at the moment, inflation, which seems to be increasing or trying to get a hold on it, consumer spending behavior, which many people these days are sort of saving as opposed to not spending it off, seeing what a savings trend is leading into. We looked at tourism and business travel, which here we consulted with the local tourism board. Agoura Hills is actually looking very good in terms of tourism in the new fiscal year. We looked at the impact of AB 1228, which is the minimum wage increase in fast food at $20 an hour. We also looked at gas prices. What was the impact of this on Agoura Hills? Well, Agoura Hills receipts from October through December were 3% below the fourth sales period in 2022. Excluding any reporting operations, actual sales were down 2%. While various economic reports indicate solid job growth and unemployment remains low, consumers pulled back on discretionary purchases with shrinking savings and tight credit conditions. Receipts diminished at both quick service and casual dining restaurants, in part due to some recent business closures. And that concludes staff's presentation, and just wanted to give counsel a -- and just wanted to give council an idea of just the sales impact and the major trends that led us into our budget process for the incoming year.
Thank you. Council members, anyone have a question? And I have no questions, so we are ready to move on.
So now that those two presentations have been completed from HDL, which is our, our vendors for our property and sales tax, we'll get started into the budget process and the mid-cycle proposed budget the staff has put together for City Council's consideration. The agenda this afternoon, staff will review the general budget and its impact on the general fund. Staff will explain how HDL's projections have led staff to estimate conservatively in the upcoming fiscal year. Staff will review the major revenues of the city of Agoura Hills and the expenditures needed to provide effective operations to the city's residents. Staff will review the current trend of the city's reserves and assure City Council of its commitment to abide by the mandated reserve level. Staff reviews some of the major projects planned for the upcoming fiscal year in addition to some projects that were presented to specific subcommittees for follow-up. City Council will then have the opportunity to discuss the preliminary budget that was distributed with all the materials for this session. Staff is also presenting the City Council tonight with an update of policies necessary to be in compliance with state banking or auditor's regulations. And during this session, there will also be time to discuss any input by members of the finance subcommittee regarding the proposed budget. Ramiro Diva, Assistant City Manager, will lead the discussion on community grants. And lastly, staff will be available for any questions, feedback, and direction from the City Council. If you have any questions during this presentation, please feel free to interrupt or let me know.
Thank you.
We begin with the revenues and expenditures for the proposed 2425 mid-cycle budget. Given the overall trend in sales tax and property tax revenues, along with all the other macro trends that were discussed earlier in the presentation, staff has estimated an overall general fund revenue total of $19,109,220, excuse me, $22. During the budgeting process and with City Manager's direction, staff determined the operational programming needs for the upcoming fiscal year totaled $19,108,945. And staff is happy to report to the City Council tonight that our budget for the fiscal year 2425 is balanced. City Council might have noticed an overall revenue forecast in the proposed documents of $20,558,645, but please note that that has a $1.4 million internal transfer to cover our debt costs for the incoming year, which has to do with our bond payments for Ladyface as well as any repayment to the successor agency. So what staff is proposing this evening to City Council is a proposed budget for 2425. As we begin this budget workshop, City Council was given the presentation on the recent forecast of property tax and sales tax and how staff used the current knowledge to develop the mid-cycle proposed budget. Staff will also give an overview of the revenue expenditure changes from the adopted fiscal year 2425 budget to its being proposed after macro changes and adjustments to pre-approved forecasts. This, this slide here gives you, gives council an idea of the revenues that were adopted versus the proposed for the 2425 fiscal year. Last year, City Council adopted budget forecasts in the, which are in the middle column. Sales and use tax were estimated to be $5,762,285. Given the activity of last year and changes in consumer behavior, the forecast that staff is proposing is now $5,78,422. That is a difference of $684,860, excuse me, $684,863. The adopted property tax and property and lieu tax was $6,739,690. Given HDL's forecast, the new proposed forecast is now $6,466,023, which is a difference of $273,667. Short-term, medium, short-term rental, we adjusted that, but it was adopted at $91,980 last year, which is line item number six. And staff is, staff has recommended a revised amount of $15,000 due to low participation. Other revenue streams such as transit occupancy tax, franchise fees, and property transfer tax seem to be holding steady in the new fiscal year. Other revenue streams such as license and permits, changes in service and investment income are forecasted to increase in the next year, which is what you'll see at the bottom when other revenues, where you see a $3.4 million adopted going, increasing to $3.9 million. I'm pausing here because I see everyone looking at the screen. So if there's any questions, please let me know.
Councilmember Anstead.
I'm looking at the property tax successor agency. Went from 125 to, from approved budget to the proposed of 227. Why did that double?
That is something that is given to count, to the city in terms of what a forecast is. We usually, we usually forecast it at that amount, but the reason for a doubling is because we're expecting more of those revenues to come in, in 2425.
Any other questions? You can continue.
Thank you, Mayor. With the reduction in some of the city's top-line revenues, staff had to review their department's expenditures, department goals, and assist finance staff with expenditure reduction or requests for operations in the new year. Each department has put a plan in place to achieve their goals while also being aware of the reduction in revenues. As we review the pie graph, please note that the public safety continues to be a high cost for the city. General government has grown due to the City Council goals for the upcoming year, which is the website improvement, cert training, and home hardening. And the city will also make its UAL payment in July that's approximately $556,012. And the payments for Ladyface bonds and the refunding bonds are also included in the debt schedule for the upcoming year. So we, department heads, along with City Manager input, were aware of what we needed to change in order to provide services for our residents. In terms of the reserve levels that the city has, in the last few years, the city has managed to grow its reserves to keep a healthy balance for any unforeseen event. During the fiscal year 2021, the reserves levels were at 10.6 million and has steadily grown over the last fiscal years. In 2122, the city's reserves increased to 13.6. That's an increase of about 28% and has stayed at the $13.6 level in the past few years. Staff continues to monitor abide by the 40%, 40% city mandated reserve level. The reserve level percentages have been higher than mandated and are at about 67% to 70%. The city has exhausted all of the one-time American Rescue Plan allocation. The city received about $4.6 million in those federal funds, and finance will continue to maintain these levels and inform City Council of any changes.
Councilmember Anstead.
So before 2021, was our general fund forecast 20, I mean, the, the same as it was in '21? Or was it, I'm just wondering before, the reason why I'm asking the question is just trying to understand why we significantly increased our reserves kind of after COVID. It looks like it. I'm just wondering, before COVID, what were our reserves? Were they in the same range as '21?
I assume so, council member. I would have to kind of do some follow-up on that and get, get you an answer. But I am assuming that at the 2021 fiscal year, 10.6, we probably used some of those ARPA funds to cover up or increase our reserves going forward because it was used for revenue replacement and not any infrastructure. We used those funds for that and not for any kind of infrastructure builds. So it's probably more of a savings to kind of continue in the new years, in the following fiscal years.
Sorry. I'm trying to understand why, so obviously, we had COVID, and we went down quite a bit in revenues during that time. And then we, right after we came out of COVID, we're now increasing our revenues. And are we doing, was that something that we've done on purpose, that significant increase? I'm trying to understand why we decided as a city that we needed to jump it up a couple million dollars? Or I can't, I can't read how much, it's a 20% or whatever the increase was.
Councilmember Anstead, I could also jump in just in, in looking at previous years. As you recall, we had some larger capital projects we were doing as well. And then how we have to typically do those is put grant funds or earmarks together, and typically we're, we're fronting those. So it may take multiple years for us to get reimbursed for some of those. And, and it was after COVID that we're just starting to get the closeout on some of the larger projects, like the Agora Road improvements and some other, the Chesbro Interchange we're going through. So those type of things take multiple years. And so we get those funds back, they will, they will go back into the reserve. We had to front a lot of that money as we're doing the projects. And so it goes back, back into the, the reserves for that.
Or are you telling me then our reserves were quite a bit higher than '21, before '21?
They were, they were probably somewhere in that range, yes. Not, I wouldn't say significantly higher, but probably a little bit higher.
But are, I guess, are we, is there a, I'm just trying to understand, like, was there a plan that you had that you want to have the 20% additional funds in the general reserve because of the, all these projects that we're about to embark on or?
Well, it's really, it's really kind of the, the council's direction of what, what projects we were working on. There was no, there's no intention by staff to, to change that, that reserve policy. That would always be a policy of the City Council. And so we're following kind of the work plan and the capital improvement project plan that's been established by the council.
And that, that's the 40%, that's the?
The 40% is set by the City Council, and that's something that the council as a whole decided to do. It, it fluctuates over time again because I think we, we talked over the last couple of budget cycles of, of how we, we need to have money for operations and then front for the larger projects that I mentioned. And so that, that's going to fluctuate our, our general fund reserve at times. But it, but at no time is the, the city staff making any decisions on what that should be. That'll always come to the council.
Through the council, okay. I got it. All right. Thank you.
For the upcoming fiscal year, the city has several projects planned. In 2324, staff worked diligently to obtain financing for the Ladyface Greenway project. The city issued bonds to finance, and the Public Works Department is currently working with vendors to break ground on the project. The city has already made the first interest payment on the bonds. The city is also in the middle of a fee study analysis that will assist staff with increasing the current fees and bringing the fees in line with post-pandemic costs. Morrison Park Playground renovation. The city of Agoura Hills joined forces with the Rotary Club of Westlake to raise funds to renovate the existing playground at Morrison Park. The goal is to replace it with equipment that is more innovative and accessible to people of all ages. The group has been fundraising with many community partners, including most recently the Southwest Ventura County YMCA. Additionally, there's also work on flock cameras, which Ramiro Diva, Assistant Manager, can explain, and two other projects that Director Forte Poliviria will explain.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Rovaniaz. And good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. So the first update that we're going to be talking about is the flock cameras. Just for a little bit of background, you might remember, these are the license plate readers that we installed around town. The original installation consisted of 14 cameras with the primary intent of making sure that we located them strategically throughout the boundaries of the city so that we could address exit and entry points into the city. This project was done in partnership with feedback from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department as well as flock themselves. At the time, we were, you know, trying to, it was a newer technology. We were getting our feel for it, and because of limited funds, we talked about 14 cameras at the time, which we, we then installed last year. Since that time, we've been able to look at qualitative metrics and determine that there have been benefits associated with them. In April, we went back and talked to the Law Enforcement Subcommittee and talked about some of those other locations in the city where we didn't get to address the exit and entry point. So as you might remember, when we, when we initially installed the 14 cameras, they did not address every single potential exit and entry point into the city. And so the idea here with the second go-around is to look at those locations now so that we could fully button up the city and be able to say that we have every entry and exit point covered with a flock camera. And so what that would entail is 11 new flock cameras. During the subcommittee, we were fortunate enough to have members of the community actually at the subcommittee, and they brought up one location that we did miss, which we did include, and you'll see this in the aerial to come. And so that takes us from the 11 original recommended from, from staff to the subcommittee to 12. So what we'd be looking at is an additional 12 cameras to be installed. The budget that you see we're requesting would cover the material and labor costs to install those cameras as well as align what would now be the 14 plus the 12, so 26 total cameras that would align them on the same annual billing cycle. So if we can go to the next slide. This is really hard to see, but if, if you could actually see this, what you would see is you'd see yellow dots, red dots, and green, and green dots. Yellow dots, green dots, and red dots. That's like the, the engineer in me wanting to pick that color scheme. So the yellow dots would actually, you'd see 14 of them here, which represent the initial 14 locations. You would see an additional 11 green dots, which are buttoning up again those locations throughout the perimeter of the city. And then you would see one red dot, which is the added location for the camera that the community actually brought up at the subcommittee. And so with that, that concludes my update of the flock cameras, and we'd love to answer any questions you have.
Councilmembers, any questions?
I just have.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm on the subcommittee, and I definitely agree with this proposal. And I think that's something that, that's something that we need to address in the city, unfortunately, for the retail, especially in the retail home thefts, something to try to address that and try to make sure our city is as safe as possible. So I recommend moving forward with this.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, and I will second what council member just said because I'm also on the subcommittee. And I think it's very reassuring to our residents to know that we are adding, closing those loopholes and providing more security.
Great. Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions to Mr. Adaba. So can you tell me, and I know I looked, I can't seem to find this on my iPad, which I'm sorry, I must have deleted it inadvertently, but I did see it. Where is the red dot? I, I see it there, but can you tell me what the location is?
Absolutely. The red dot is on Canwood Street, just east of Reyes Adobe Road.
It's on Canwood, just east of Reyes Adobe Road. Okay, got it. And I'm seeing that in some of the locations, especially on the south side of the freeway, I'm seeing that there are yellow dots, meaning they have an existing flock camera, and then green lights right next to them, green dots. Why would we need additional?
So those, Madam Mayor, great question. So the yellow dots, you'll see that those were placed, for instance, if we look on Canaan as an example, you'll see the green dots located right below them at the intersection of Canaan and Agora Road. So you have the, the, anybody looking to exit the city on the north light, north of the intersection, would be captured with the current cameras that are there. But if somebody was to come in or leave the city going towards or from Malibu, as an example, that direction is not covered. And so we would add cameras there to make sure that, again, that was an entry or exit point in the past that we weren't able to address with the 14, but we're doing that now. And you see similar things like that. So over Liberty Canyon, same thing. We had two initial cameras installed to capture people who are coming to and from the freeway. But what we didn't, what we were not able to do is to capture anybody coming from, let's say, Calabasas on Agora Road. And so again, you'll see, that's why you see green dots really close to yellow dots. And that kind of is the general trend throughout the rationale.
Great. Thank you for that. And then up at the top, I see a yellow dot and a green dot. Is that Canaan Road up in, at the entrance and exit by Oak Park?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the one on the far left, I'm assuming that is what, Lindero?
On, above, north of the 101 freeway?
Yes, north of the 101.
Yeah, that's Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Thousand Oaks and Lindero?
Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lake Lindero, yes.
Lake Lindero. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, that's the only, oh, and so we will have a total of 26 flock cameras. And do we have any data to show that the flock cameras are helping our law enforcement?
We do. We have, yes. So that was part of the discussion that we presented to the subcommittee. We do have feedback from the Sheriff's Department, where they've shown cases where this has been a tool that they have used to actually solve crimes.
And do you have a number for us?
Not, not number necessarily, but it's, it's a little complicated. So it's more qualitative data, I would say, because of the way the sheriffs use it. You know, it's not the only variable in solving or investigating that they use. And so it's not just a linear, you know, one crime was solved because the, but it could say it was related to the vehicle or, or, you know, the crime that they're looking into. I know I'm not explaining that absolutely.
That's okay, but I'm assuming that the Sheriff's Department is, is good with this plan.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and just so our residents know, there are no flock cameras in our residential neighborhoods. Am I seeing that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you so much. I have no further questions. Anyone else have questions?
No, but I would like to add some more information in that some of our HOAs are in putting in flock cameras within neighborhoods. And those also will be accessible on the system for the sheriff's department to access the information.
And who's paying for that and who's making those decisions?
The, the HOAs.
The HOAs paying for it, and they've reached out to their, the city has no involvement in it?
As far as I know, that is correct.
I can, so we're, we've been approached by one particular HOA on, they've, they've made a decision to purchase the cameras. Now where they place them is something that we're having a discussion with, whether that's on private property and how the, you know, how those would be placed and what permits would be required if they're using like an Edison pole or something else, they're going to need to get permission from that, that party. So I don't think that anything's been decided, other than that they want to move forward with them, but we'll continue to work with them and try to find the best means to assist them where possible. But we're still working on that.
But, and there wouldn't be any liability to the city? This would all be specific to the HOA?
Correct. They're, they're going to have to find locations that, that work within the HOA area. And so that this, they're probably, if, if anything, they may, if they use like an Edison pole or anything else, they're going to have to release them of liability for that.
Okay, great. And there, I assume they're working with their residents to make sure the residents are comfortable with that?
I don't, I don't know that I can comment appropriately on that.
Okay. And, and then lastly, if our residents who don't have HOAs, how are we dealing with them?
So those are decisions that this particular HOA made. They felt that the flock cameras in their neighborhood would be helpful. I think the, the feeling of staff is that we've got the perimeter of the community covered, and that, that will assist the sheriffs. But those that don't have HOA can, can rest assured that we have the area covered through the cameras that are being proposed.
Okay. And so if residents don't have an HOA, can they get their own flock camera?
They can. I, I would probably strongly suggest someone like that, like an individual homeowner to register their cameras with the sheriff's department, which is done for free.
Okay.
And then there's no cost to them, and they don't have to worry about getting permits and those kind of things. I think you can get good cameras for a lot less money that you could put around your property and, and have the sheriffs have access to those when they're needed.
Excellent. And one last question. So does a private homeowner who wants to have a flock camera or ring bell, ring bell, I don't think is a problem, but if they want to have a flock camera that's tied into the sheriff, and it over, and from the camera, you can see a neighbor's property, do they, do they have to come in for a permit? Does the city get involved in any of that?
So the flock cameras particularly are meant to be along the roadways, and they are really only to read license plates and, and like bumpers of a vehicle, and you can identify the type and color. So they should not, and are not intended to be faced into anybody's private property.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Could I follow up?
Huh?
Just talking about the ring cameras, anybody can register their ring camera with the sheriff's department. I, I have done so. And then what they do is when there is an incident in the neighborhood, they contact you, and they say, this incident happened at this time. Could you please look at your security footage? If there is anything that you think could be helpful to us, you know, please send us that footage. So the, the great thing about the, the ring cameras is that is recorded live, and the can then be sent to the sheriff's department. Flock cameras are not live. They just, they just go, I am correct here, right? They go in and look when there is an incident, but nobody is monitoring them 24 hours. Whereas in the, in the system that they've set up at the sheriff's department, those cameras can be monitored 24 hours, and they can contact a homeowner to say, if there is a hostage situation or something, they can contact the homeowner and say, can we get a live feed from your camera?
Yes. And I looked into that program, and it was my, what I've been told is that that program is not up and running. Now, I haven't checked recently because I wanted to register myself, my own ring bell. And I was told it's not up and running yet. I'd like the residents to get that information, if we can put it out, if it's up and running.
We are actually, Mr. Adaba is diligently working, and I know he just had a meeting earlier today about putting out the information.
Great.
So we're actually on it, and the program is available, but we are going to push it out to our community in addition to what the sheriff's department has put out as well.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I have no further questions.
And I would like to follow up, because when I went to this, you know, the new command center they have, they showed, brought up the map, and my house had a little camera on it. So they know, and I've already received an email from them saying, can you submit footage for a certain day and date?
I, I think that's a great program, that they're not monitoring it, but if they see something happen in your area, and then the homeowner can voluntarily turn it over. I know I'd feel comfortable turning over my ring bell if something happened in my area. But when I did try and sign up, and I even contacted the sheriff's office because I couldn't get it to sign up, and they said it's not up and running yet. But it's, it's been weeks. So it sounds like that that should be coming online. And once we do, we can start to do some social media and get that information out to the residents. I think a lot of our residents would be interested in that program. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Adaba.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. I have two slides I'll present today. The first, both of these items have been reviewed by the Public Works Subcommittee, which is comprised of Mayor Elise Bugley-Weber and Councilmember Jeremy Wolfe. The first of the two project updates that I will give is the Reyes Adobe Lighting Project. This project had been funded in fiscal year 2425 at, at $250,000. When we did the review of what we thought this project would cost at this time last year, we had included the cost associated with removing and replacing the poles. Since that time, the Public Works staff has reviewed this item, and it became apparent that we can just replace the head assembly. So the Public Works Subcommittee recommends matching the head type that's in the City Hall parking lot, removing and replacing the assembly that's on the eight poles on Reyes Adobe Bridge with, with that assembly, and then painting the poles the same color, essentially, that they are now, but that way the faded paint and the new paint don't clash. With that, we expect the total budget for the project to be just under $50,000, and we're recommending that the budget for this be, this project be reduced by $200,000. That's the good news for tonight, if anyone has any questions.
That's great news. Does anybody have any questions about that? I know you've heard me talk about these lights for a long time, so we are getting rid of the Agoura Hills runway. I'm glad to announce. Go ahead.
No, I, I just want to thank staff for the, finding the solution, because I mean, this always seemed to be kind of like we're trying to resolve it, and to spend that amount of money just seemed like extravagant. And to reduce it by $200,000, just got to commend you for that. That's fantastic to try to find that solution. So awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And bravo to staff for coming up with that solution.
Thank you. The thanks goes to Brian Woodworth and Kelly Fisher on that one. They worked really hard on this this past year.
Way to go, Kelly and Brian. Thank you.
This one's a little bit tougher. This has to do with our street sweeping contract. It's a core service that we provide to the community. During the term of the existing, of the contract that's currently in place, the Department of Industrial Relations made a ruling on the labor rate that needs to be used for street sweepers. And now street sweepers are viewed as equipment operators. So when we became aware of that this, this year, early in 2024, and we've been working with our street, street sweeping contractor Clean Streets to navigate what we would do. You can see in this slide, if we kept our current level of service, which is twice a month sweeping residential streets and weekly sweeping, sweeping of arterial streets, we would have seen this contract increase from about $147,000 to $328,000. Due to that sharp increase, staff and the Public Works Subcommittee reviewed several different options that presents kind of a more modest increase in the budget and balances kind of a reduction in the level of service. And what we're recommending, the recommendation of the Public Works Subcommittee, although it is a tough one, was to adjust the budget by $26,000, which represents about an 18% increase over the current, current level of service, and to evaluate how that process is going over the course of these coming six months, and then return around mid-year to say, you know, hey, this, this reduction in level of service, just, we're really not getting what we need. We do feel like we may need a little bit more money. Or, you know, at this one time a month for residentials, twice a month for arterials, we are still cleaning up the streets, and we feel comfortable with that. So staff will do that analysis over the coming six months and return to the Public Works Subcommittee with, with our understanding of how the program is being rolled out. So with that, I can field any questions that the council may have.
Any questions from the council?
No, I would just like to make a comment. I'm, I'm glad that you are doing this, because we obviously have to, to cut back, but that you are doing it for six months and monitoring it very carefully, because we do want to make sure that our streets do remain, you know, clean and, and well taken care of. And I do believe that it, the legal, is there a legal minimum that you have to do?
There is the National Pollution, NPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is the overarching law, essentially the Clean Water Act law that manages what can enter into our storm drain system, has a mandated minimum. That's reflected here in option two. All that's really required is once a month, oh, I'm sorry, once a month, once a year, I'm sorry, this is, I apologize. It's once a year for residentials or arterial streets, which is far below the standard, I think, our, our residents are used to, and I don't think it would adequately keep leaves.
So, so I mean, I, that's why I appreciate that you have, you were going to experiment with this, and then we can report, you can report back, and, and we can see if, if we can maintain it.
Yes.
So thank you for trying.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Yes. Question, I guess, I have, I see all these different options on there, and I see you have the twice a month for the arterial, but one of the options I don't see on there is like to have both twice a month. So I'm just wondering how much more, like, if you would have done residential instead of once a month, twice a month, and do arterial twice a month, how much more are we talking about if you do that option?
I'm sorry?
Oh, is that option five?
I think that if you look here.
I'm looking at, it says weekly, though. It says all streets twice a month.
Weekly.
And then weekly for arterial. So I was just wondering what the option, what the cost would be if you do twice a month for residential and twice a month for arterial. So the same, whether it's arterial or residential. And I'm asking that just because I am a little concerned. The reason why I'm concerned, I guess, is I have some anecdotes of people talking to me about, and I'm a huge bicyclist, so I'm obviously, some people come to me that are bicyclists, and I've heard of the pine cones from some of our trees in our town, where they, they let down on the sidewalk or near the, near the sidewalk in the road, and bicyclists are riding there. And I have heard bicyclists hitting those pine cones and, and causing accidents. And so I, I just want to make sure that we're very careful about making this adjustment. So I'm just wondering what the, the cost difference would be if we went to twice a month on the residential as well as the arterial?
So I don't have that exact figure in front of me, just a little, very quick math, and I could return to the council. It looks like it would be about an additional $90,000. So rather than the $181,000 to keep the current level of service, we would be requesting somewhere around $115,000 to do both arterials and residential streets twice a month. Now, that is an exact math. I would want to review that, but I think on the, on the, you know, 30,000 foot view, that's about what we would be looking at.
So the most significant cost is coming from the residential streets for the, for the street sweeping? Is that where the majority of the cost is coming?
We, we have significantly more curb lane miles along residential streets. So, so yes, the, the math that I just did pretty simply here was using that option one, which is twice a month for residential, and then weekly for arterial. And I'm kind of estimating that that would be about, about half of the increase would be to bring the arterials down to twice a month from weekly in that option. Again, it's not perfect. It's kind of scratch math here.
So I, I guess the next question, then, so it is a significant increase to do what I'm asking. So let me ask you, just the next thing I would ask is, if we're going to go with this option, when would you come back to us to kind of assess how this is going? Because I, I definitely am, am concerned, as a city council member, that there might be increased issues, and I, I want to make sure that there isn't.
Sure. I think we were considering bringing it back to Public Works Subcommittee in or around December, so that we would be prepared to make a recommendation at the mid-year budget review cycle in February, late February, I believe.
Okay. So as long as that's on the slate, I think I'm, I'm more comfortable with it. But I, I definitely would ask that staff monitor this closely for complaints or, and also just going out also maybe and, and checking to see how things are looking out there.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Thank you.
And I would recommend, Councilmember, I've said that when people talk to you about it, if maybe you can give staff where they're talking about, because the complaints I've gotten were on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which is arterial, right? And so that's not residential. And so if they do complain, be sure to get where they're talking about. I'm guessing it's Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We have a lot of pine trees that we've slowly been taking out and putting in different kinds of trees for exactly that reason. Thank you.
All right. Unless there are any other questions, that concludes my couple of slides.
Review of the budget document. The city council has been provided with a copy of the proposed mid-cycle budget, and at this time, staff is available for any questions, if there were any, from the document. We presented earlier just some of the changes from the adopted general fund revenues and expenditures to the proposed, but if there's any questions from the document that was provided, please let us know.
So anybody have any further questions about the proposed mid-cycle budget review? I have no questions. So do you want us, do you need more feedback? Do you want us to take a vote on it?
There's more on those.
But, okay, but that was the mid-cycle. Okay.
I'm sorry.
And I can, just on the items that, the three items that were presented, it sounds like we have consensus. So what, what we will do, and this is already proposed in the budget that's before you this afternoon, so when we bring it back for formal adoption, all of those things will be included unless there's any opposition, which I didn't hear any in this case, so we don't need a formal action.
Great. Thank you.
In May of 2014, the city council adopted a financial policy which requires that each financial policy be updated every three years. This year, staff has updated the federally funded procurement policy, the fund balance policy, the officer employee official responsibility and fraud detection policy, and the balanced budget policy, which are all updated this year and will be included in the final document at the end of the month. And at this time, any member of the finance subcommittee, if they would like to provide any input for the proposed, Mayor Protem, I know that Councilmember Klein Lopez is not in today, but do you have any comments from the finance subcommittee meeting?
Not so far, because we haven't got to the fees yet.
Oh.
Thank you.
And at this time, if, excuse me, the finance subcommittee met on May 14 to discuss the appropriations of community grants. The city council has been provided with the list of community grants for the fiscal year 2425, and Romero Deva, Assistant City Manager, will lead the discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rabáñez. So the city council should all have a copy of the Community Outreach Grant Program Request, the matrix that shows the breakdown. As in previous years, the Community Grant Outreach Program As in previous years, the Community Grant Outreach Program, um, we received a lot of very, uh, a lot of applicants, a lot of applications, um, so many worthy causes, um, such a challenging conversation. I know that the council members on the Finance Committee, in this case Mayor Protem Sylvester and Councilmember Klein Lopez, uh, put in the situation to try and go through all of these and figure out how much, um, to go ahead and recommend to the City Council. Just as a point of, uh, reference, there was a total requested funding this year of $153,000. And so what you see in front of you, you know, the, the committee somehow got it down to $33,400. Um, this would be that appropriate time that we can have the discussion on, um, the committee's recommended list and, um, and we can just get right into that. So, I'll toss it back.
Thank, thank you. How do you want to go about doing this? Do you want, um, we want to comment on the list that we've been provided?
Would you like me to just go down it and tell you our thoughts?
Um, yes, I mean, unless, Councilmember Anstead?
Sorry, I just want to make a statement before we get into it, um, just to make sure it's on the record. Um, none, none of the requests were from Mariposa Elementary School, but I just want to put it on the record that my wife is a school teacher at Mariposa Elementary School in, uh, Agora and, uh, as far as I can tell, none of the specific requests were for Mariposa. They were for other schools, but not for Mariposa.
You vote Mariposa.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
So I need to, I'm exclu, I, I can't vote on that then. I think I need to be excluded from that. Am I correct on that?
Uh, you can recute yourself if you choose to do so, yeah.
Yeah, I think I, I won't vote on that one.
Okay, so would you let me just?
Thank you.
What I've seen work best over the years is if, um, I, I think if the other two councilmembers that were not on, didn't have the opportunity at the, the Subcommittee to look at it, maybe had questions and then you as the Subcommittee representative this afternoon could answer how you came about those numbers. I think that, that may work the best.
That sounds great. So Councilman, Councilmember Anstead, do you have any questions or comments about the list that's been provided to us?
Uh, I guess just one, uh, one that I feel strongly about and try to, one that I would like to make comments on, I guess.
Okay.
So, the, the Americans Serving Americans, um, was a request, I think they requested, they might have put in the request for, I think, $20,000, I see, here. And it's their first time doing this, but it's an organization that we've been working with in the past. For Veterans Day last year, we worked with them to do care packages to troops overseas. And the city's also currently going to do a certificate, I think, to, to support the organization, which is fantastic. And, uh, but I wanted to just try to request, um, that we support them at least at the thousand-dollar level, so just a $500 increase over what the committee approved them for. And, um, so I'm just requesting that we add additional $500 to that and at least do a minimum of $1,000 this year for that, that organization. I think it's a great organization to help actually not veterans, but current members in our armed forces. And so I'd, I'd advocate for at least $1,000.
Thank you for that.
No problem.
Um, and before we move on to that, I also have, um, I see in here that there is no dollars being allocated to the Topanga Banda Fiddle Contest and Folk Festival. Um, I do want to thank the Subcommittee because it appears that everybody's been, we've got, we're giving grants to youth, to seniors, to the underserved community, to the disabled community, to the wildlife community, but nothing here is for cultural arts and count and, and arts and music. And so I wanted to make a request, um, let me tell you a little bit about the history of the Topanga Banda Fiddle Contest.
Can I save you some time?
Sure.
We actually have not assigned any funds from this account because Ms. Brink.
It's coming from Community Services?
Yes. So would you like to?
It's in the special events, so it's, there's a special events, uh, I think, I believe it's Fund 240.
Okay.
I think, uh, but there's $2,700 in, in that, um, in that account.
Going forward.
Okay.
And then going forward, it would be funded as well.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Correct.
Okay, so I won't take the time to read you all the history, the fascinating history of the Topanga Banda Fiddle Festival, but, you know, it's really a big part of this region and I, you know, I go every year and I see a lot of people from Agora Hills and it's got your old Agora element and it's just really a wonderful festival. And we'll be coming, it's slated to come back to Paramount Ranch, it got moved to Calabasas this year, but it, of course, I asked around and it is slated to come back to Paramount Ranch. And if that happens, you know, we always look forward to having people stay, um, at our local hotels and our restaurants. So one of the things that I was going to say, if there's 2,700 allocated for it, I saw in their application, in the past, we gave 5,000. If we're not giving 5,000, then I would ask that we go up to 3,000 so that we could be at least a sponsor at the Tiny Porch stage. And Tiny Porch, for those who don't know, Amy's looking at me because she knows Tiny Porch, they have helped considerably over the years to bring some original live music to the city of Agora Hills. They bring us a band, Ray's Adobe Days, Night at the Adobe, um, they did the band for the 40th anniversary special. And so I believe that, um, they put on a concert, I, I can't even believe how many of our residents are actually going now to the Tiny Porch concerts that they hold up at the Peter Strauss Ranch. It's something, you know, really exciting in our community. So if we're not going to be a full sponsor at 5,000, then I would like to see us at least sponsor the Tiny Porch stage, which is a $3,000 commitment, the way I saw it in the application. So I don't know if that gets brought up in grant or how that, you know, if, how we work that.
You know what, can I make actually one, I just, I want to clear up something for the record though, too, because I made, I made a mention on the record that it was Fund 240 and it's actually, what I meant to say is it's Special Events Department 4430, it's actually general fund, so it's 010.
Okay.
Just for the record, because I said the incorrect. Um, yeah, I would imagine that, that's, that's a discussion for the, the greater budget outside of the community grants, but.
So as I presented at the beginning of the, of the budget workshop, we are very tight and only have about a $77 surplus. What I would suggest, City Manager, um, with your direction, is that if we were to make any kind of changes to this particular budget, we would probably stay within the current budgeted, uh, community grants fund and move funds within that, uh, to, to appropriate to any requests that council members might have going forward. Or with direction, we can look for additional funds elsewhere within the general fund and come back at, at approval in a couple of weeks with those new adjustments. So.
That, that, that sounds fine to me. I'd like to see, I mean, I, you know, and maybe some of it can be from community grants and some of it can be from elsewhere. So, well, that makes my job a lot easier because I took the time to go through each one of these, which I did not want to do on the dais, and tell you where I think we could cut to come up with the $3,000. So I'm going to just tear up that piece of paper and no one will ever know. Um, and so I think that, and I would comment that I don't have a problem with going up to the 1,000 for the Americans, America, America Supporting Americans. I went on the website to check it out. I think I did some significant due diligence to see who they were and they've been around for a while, um, but I'm open to any other comments about that.
So if we were to increase that by 500, that means we have to decrease our allotments elsewhere.
That's correct.
Um, so how we felt, and it, as you feel strongly about the, the music festival, which I appreciate, I also feel strongly that we need to support our local schools because I think that's what brings new members into our community more than anything else, as we heard at the, um, Realtors Luncheon we attended last week. So that is why we have, you know, taken up more schools this year in, in supporting them. So where would you suggest we go to take out 500?
Well, I have to say, from my opinion, the Agora High School Community Garden Club, um, we've been down this path with Agora High before, where we planted, where a garden was planted and, um, the, the people who wanted it most and who took care of it graduated. And that was the end of the community garden. So that's one area that in, unless you guys all know that there's some sort of administration, there's an administrator in charge, not just the students, um, and I don't know. Um, but that would be one area. And then I looked at things like, um, uh, the light, the USD Library Media, we doubled their contributions, so maybe, you know, we chip away at 250 from there, um, 250 from the garden, there's your 500.
Right. The library one was based on a per student, um, I'm trying to look at my notes. Does anybody remember what it, it came to per pupil? Oh, I know, because they wanted, if they got a, a dollar per pupil, it would be 4,079. And so we cut it to 50 cents a student for the district. So that's what that number was based on. So we, we already, am I correct there? Yeah. So we're giving 50 cents per, per student from Agora Hills. So I, I would fight for that one. I'm comfortable if we feel to take the 500 and not give it to the garden club. So that would give us the 500 for, for these American Supporting Americans.
Okay. And I would, again, I would encourage the garden club, um, as long as we know this is something that's not going to die over the summer.
Yes.
I would be, you know, open to another year.
And also because they're a non, they, they aren't a nonprofit.
Oh, okay.
So there was also a question of whether we could do that anyway.
Right, okay.
So I would be comfortable with that compromise.
Uh, that, that would work for me. How about you, Councilmember Anstead?
I'm fine with that. The other one I saw that I, I mean, I'm fine supporting them, but I don't know if we need to do it at 2,500, uh, is the Malibu Search and Rescue, uh, even if we would just went down to 2,000 instead of 2,500.
I agree. I could go down on Malibu Search and Rescue as well.
Okay.
Two.
Well, would we need to? Because if, if we take out the five.
We don't need to if we, um, well, depending on what you all come back with for the Topanga Fiddle Festival, we may have to come.
If I can interrupt, uh, City Manager, Mayor, Mayor and Council, from my understanding through this review is that, uh, we are making a proposed change to the American Supporting Americans by an additional 500 and the Topanga Fiddle, which was, has a contribution in the rec budget for 2,700, you're asking for an additional $300, which brings in an overall increase of 800. You've taken 500 or have removed the appropriation to the garden club for 500. So we, during this discussion, just seen that additional 300 for the Topanga.
Okay. And I would, I agree with Councilmember Anstead and reduce it from the, um, Malibu Search and Rescue. And I say that because Malibu Search and Rescue, you know, it's a very important organization and they're able to get all kinds of grants outside of the city of Agora Hills. And I think we, you know, in kind, we help them with things. And so, um, I'd feel comfortable by, we'd be reducing them by 300.
Okay.
Which would still give them more than they got last year.
So, okay, and then we'd get, we'd, we'd put an additional 300 to the Topanga?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. I hope Debbie and Jeremy approve.
I love how we're, what are we having, a $19 million budget? And we're like, 200 here, 300 there. But this is very important to our community.
Oh, understood.
And you all know that, so, um, and, you know, all these organizations are worthy and if we had a lot more money, we would be able to give more, so.
I know. It would be nice to just take everything.
But I do want to compliment the Subcommittee on the diversity of the different groups. And I think that's really important. You know, when I first got on the council, we rarely gave money, um, outside of the city of Agora Hills. And we have expanded just a little bit, but things like Senior Concerns, Many Mansions, Golden Heart Ranch, Conejo Free Clinic, which, you know, those organizations serve our residents. And so it's really nice that we're able to help them out a little bit. So thank you for doing that. With that, is there anything else you need from us?
Uh, this concludes our presentation. If I could just recap and reiterate what City Manager mentioned, that we will come back with the project updates that were presented by Assistant City Manager Deba and Public Works Director Forte. Along with the changes in the community grants, we'll be able to provide a, a budget that should be ready for adoption at the second meeting. But at this point, uh, staff is available for any questions, feedback or direction, either City Manager or City Council.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I just have two comments and, and I want to thank, um, Mr. Ibanez for helping me with some of the, uh, different items. You were able to answer all my questions and we're still working on one last one, but it has nothing to do with going forward tonight. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I also, I don't remember last year, but I really liked getting it on my iPad rather than a hard copy. For some reason, it was just easier for me to read it and to be able to flip back and forth really quickly. Um, so thank you for that. And I love the pictures that you chose. Somewhere there was one of the wildlife crossing and somewhere there was one of a mountain lion and of course, the oak tree, so.
That was the hardest part, Mayor, was.
I bet it was. And, and lastly, um, I just, when I saw the sales tax breakdown, um, it really hit me that there are funds from six different measures. And so when we talk about Measure M and Measure A and Measure this and Measure that, whether they're county or state or whatever they are, um, they're really important to a small city for, like us. So, um, just wanted the residents to know how important they are and you can see it in that graph. So thank you. And with that, any other comments? Okay, so then let's see here, we are going to, uh, do we have, um, there's no formal action being taken. Are there any comments from staff? Any other comments from City Council? Okay, then the regular City Council meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Good evening, everybody. Are we ready to get started? Welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. So I'm going to now call this meeting, the regular meeting of the Agoura Hills City Council, Wednesday, June 12, 2024, to order at 6:00 p.m. Now, we're going to start with our land acknowledgement. The city of Agoura Hills acknowledges that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Schumash Nation. Descendants of Schumash still remain, and we honor and pay our respects to their elders in various groups that make up the past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of our lands and waters. We have a responsibility and commitment to elevate the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of the city of Agoura Hills, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. I'm now going to defer to Councilmember Anstead to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'm going -- Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, good evening. Councilmember Anstead.
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez. Councilmember Wolf. Mayor Protem Sylvester.
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber.
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have a quorum with councilmembers Klein Lopez and Wolf absent.
Thank you very much. I'm now going to ask for a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda.
Mayor Protem Sylvester moves to approve the agenda.
City Councilman Chris Anstead seconds.
Thank you very much. And now, we are going to have a presentation from the California Association.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor, a roll call?
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. On the agenda, yes, on approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sylvester.
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, three to zero.
You see how excited I am about the presentation? Okay, the presentation is from the California Association of Public Information Officials, aka CAPO. Thank you, will you please step up to the podium?
Evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for allowing me a little bit of time. I'm very excited to be here. My name is Stephen Baird. For CAPO, I serve as their Vice President of Awards. Some of you may recognize me because I also serve as one-third of the communications team down the road at LVMWD. So I'm very familiar with Agoura Hills and the work that you do as a city council, but as well certainly as your communications team. On behalf of CAPO, the California Association of Public Information Officers, it's an honor to be here today and present -- what I'm really here to do is to present the epic award that your team won this year for its State of the City event. for its State of the City event. A little bit about CAPO real quick. We are the leading organization statewide for advancing and elevating public sector communicators. We currently have over 1,000 members, and we continue to see amazing growth. Because of that growth, our EPIC Awards are really, really special. And it's an annual award presented at our conference. And what it does is it honors the truly exceptional outstanding work that is done in public sector communications. And that's everything from city governments to district attorney's offices, to water districts, for instance. So throughout the state, it's every type of public communicator, and they're putting their best work forward. This year was incredibly competitive. CAPO received over 400 award submissions across the 30 categories that we offer. And of those 400, there's less than 100 awards total given. And that includes Award of Distinctions, as well as the EPIC Awards, and there's even fewer EPIC Awards. Receiving an EPIC Award is a bit of a rigorous process. There is the award, you have to really bring your A-game when you present your -- when you present your, you know, your program and what you were really trying to get across. Each award is evaluated by our colleagues in Texas, the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers, TAMEO. And so they're really looking at it with just at the quality of the project in front of them. And it really helps with transparency and fairness. This marks the fifth award in three years for Agoura Hills Communications Team. And that's really quite an accomplishment when you look at, again, how competitive it is, the fact that you're going up against everything, again, from transportation agencies to huge cities to all of these different communicators. So I really commend the work that this team has done, especially this year, but also, like we said, five awards over three years. That's very impressive. But when we talk about elevating public sector communicators, it's not just about giving awards, though that is awesome, don't get me wrong. It's also about sharing the knowledge and really being part of a community that has each other's backs when things are tough and celebrates you when you get your wins. And we really want to commend the Agoura Hills team as well for their continued efforts to support our members by sharing their knowledge and how they get to be so epic. Last year, we had the really great idea we were trying to get more enthusiasm for our awards, and Ramiro and the team produced an awesome video that we featured on social media and our website. And they did, they used EPIC quite a few times in that script. So, again, just, you know, being part of a team like that and being willing to throw your hat in the ring and support is just such an important aspect of what makes CAPO great. And, you know, this team does it amazingly. This year, this picture, obviously loved to have a lot of fun. It was one of the best-attended sessions at this year's conference. And, you know, this team are thought leaders. People want to come and hear what they're doing and how they got here and how you guys got here. And so their conference session, End Zone Excellence, How to Score Big Communications Wins, just a tremendous effort. And, again, like I said, one of the best-attended sessions of the conference. So, again, we commend and we thank and we show our gratitude for the efforts that you guys put in. Also, we thank the city for supporting your team to help be a part of CAPO. There is time to put awards in. There is time to come to conferences and share your story. And so the support that you give is also incredibly important, and we recognize that. And I want to express my gratitude and the organization's gratitude for that. Before I leave and we present the award, I did want to share a judge's comment from this year's award, which, again, is for your State of the City. "Agoura Hills' State of the City provided an intimate and formal event for important figureheads and community members to unite for the city. The research and planning by the city's team did a great job implementing traditional and innovative ways to execute the event, including a diversity of people and groups." That's what public communications is all about, right? We're innovating, but we're not leaving people behind. We understand that we have diverse groups and communities that we have to reach. And, you know, the work that your team has done, five awards, three years, the State of the City, just a tremendous accomplishment. And I look forward to presenting you the award. And, again, I think a round of applause for this team is in order.
Well, you know we want to get a picture.
Of course. Yes, yes, I wear two hats, Water District and Smart Penn. Thank you again, everybody. I really appreciate the time.
Thank you so much. Well, that was fun. We have an EPIC Assistant City Manager, an EPIC City Manager. I love that word, EPIC. We're the most epic city in the region. I'll stop there. Okay. I could keep going, but I won't. All right, so now we're going to go to Intergovernmental, Special Purpose Committee, and Departmental Reports. And it was lovely what he had just said about how inclusive we are with our residents and how diverse our community is, and we never want to leave anybody out. Which leads me to, it's Pride Month, Pride Heritage Month. So Pride Month is an annual worldwide celebration of the many contributions by the LGBTQ+ community. In most places, but not all, pride is celebrated throughout the month of June in commemoration of the Stonewall Riots in Manhattan, New York in June 1969. As was common practice in many cities, the New York Police Department would occasionally raid bars and restaurants where gays and lesbians were known to gather. At the time, there were local laws against serving alcohol to gays and lesbians. On June 28, 1969, the NYPD raided the Stonewall Inn, a bar in the Greenwich Village neighborhood of Manhattan. When the police dragged patrons and employees out of the Stonewall Inn, several people fought back against the NYPD, and many locals gathered in the streets. The confrontations quickly escalated and sparked six days of protests and violent clashes with the NYPD outside the Stonewall Inn on Christopher Street and throughout the neighborhood. By the time the Stonewall riots ended on July 2, 1969, the gay rights movement went from being a fringe issue, largely ignored by politicians and the media, to front-page news worldwide. One year later, during the anniversary of the Stonewall riots, activists in New York City marched through the streets of Manhattan in commemoration of the uprising and have continued ever since throughout our country and worldwide. The month of June was officially designated as Gay and Lesbian Pride Month by President Bill Clinton in the year 2000. In 2009, President Barack Obama chose a more inclusive name, Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. Last Friday, the City of Agoura Hills was honored to have LA County Supervisor Lindsey Horvath present the city with the Progress Pride Flag. And pursuant to the city council's resolution, it was raised for the first time at City Hall with members of our community. The Progress Pride Flag is a symbol of diversity as seen by the variety of colors included on the flag. And like the flag which continues to evolve, so will our communities as we continue to openly acknowledge and embrace our differences to create a masterpiece of art where every person is recognized and loved. The raising of this flag at our City Hall is a resolute symbol of our enduring commitment to diversity, inclusion, and equality. This event was not merely about raising a flag. It's about raising awareness, fostering understanding, and promoting a culture of acceptance and respect in our city. As I do for every Heritage Month, some of the famous members of the LGBTQ+ community are, and this is just to name a few, San Francisco County Supervisor Harvey Milk, tennis champion and author Billie Jean King, singer-songwriter Miley Cyrus, actor Drew Barrymore, Apple CEO Tim Cook, comedian Wanda Sykes, U.S. Secretary of Transportation and former candidate for U.S. President Pete Buttigieg, our former state senator and LA County Supervisor Sheila Kuehl, and our beloved former Agoura High Principal Stephanie McKay. So with that, I hope you will all join me in celebrating Pride Month. And I appreciate the work of the staff and the council in supporting the resolution. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Anstead.
You got it. I just want to say that I first want to thank you, actually, for bringing, actually, to bringing up the, kind of, the monthly item on the agenda to honor people. And I think the Pride Month, I'm very fully supportive and appreciate you doing that this month and commemorating that. So I just wanted to say I appreciate it and I'm fully supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anstead. Mayor Protem Sylvester.
And I would just like to second what Councilmember Anstead said. I was really proud to be there as we raised that flag. And I think it's so important for all our families to know that they belong in this city.
And that they're safe here. I agree. Thank you. So moving on now, we're going to RAS Adobe Days 2024 Update. Community Service Director Amy Brink.
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Recreation Manager Newkirk to give us the eyes and the update.
Let's go, Nick.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow councilmembers. We bring to you just a brief update on the progress of the 2024 RAS Adobe Days, which will be the 20th Annual RAS Adobe Days. So this year's theme, in honor of the 20 years, is celebrating 20 years of arts and culture. Our robust RAT Executive Committee has been hard at work over the last couple of months, starting to put pieces in place for the upcoming event. Old things, new things. I'll have a more detailed description of the weekend festivities in future council meetings, probably some time in August. But the real reason for coming tonight, the event will be held the weekend of October 4 through the 6, 2024, at the RAS Adobe Historical Site and Park. And we will have a grand marshal. And this year's grand marshal, we are thrilled to announce, is Jerry O'Connell. You may recognize Mr. O'Connell from his talk show, The Talk, where he is a two-time Daytime Emmy Award winner, along with his other co-hosts. He was also seen in the movie Stand By Me and Jerry Maguire as the famous quarterback. He was in TV shows in the early '90s called My Secret Identity. And my personal favorite, he played Sheldon's brother on The Big Bang Theory. We're thrilled to have him. He seems incredibly excited. In my brief emails with him, he was looking at costumes to wear during the parade. So we think he's in it. And he will be here Friday evening and Saturday during the day to join the festivities. As always, you'll be able to view the rasedobedays.org website to get more information as we get closer to the event. And we hope to see you all, October 4 through the 6, 2024, for the 20th Annual RAS Adobe Days.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to meet Mr. O'Connell. And I'm really excited that we're celebrating arts and culture. So, great choice, everybody. Let's see, are there any reports from staff? Director of Community Development, Amy Brink.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley Weber, and good evening, councilmembers. We're going to pull something up on the screen. I just wanted to give a personal thank you to Jerry O'Connell and say that we're really looking forward to him being a part of the event this year. He lives locally, his kids are involved in the school district. So, and he's been the face of the foundation event before. So we're lucky to have a stab at him for RAS Adobe Days. So looking forward to that. Last weekend, we officially kicked off summer at RAS Adobe Park. On June 8, we showed Maverick. It was a great day. We had several hundred families that came out and watched the movie. I'm really excited about the events this summer. We have an amazing community services staff led by Tatiana Gonzalez, our community services coordinator. She has got a lot of activities and programs and photo booths planned for all of these events that I'm about ready to mention to you. So not only are you going out to see the movie, you have an opportunity to engage and connect with other community members. So movies in the park are back. We are doing them on Saturdays at RAS Adobe Park. July 13 will be the Super Mario Brother. And then at the end of July, we're going to be showing Coco. So we're really excited about that. The next event is actually kicking off on this Sunday. And I would like to give a shout out and a big thank you to DIY in Agoura Hills. They are our platinum sponsor. So I want to thank them for that. They have always been super supportive of our community events, but this year they stepped up. They've been up in the past, but they stepped up again this year and became our platinum sponsor. If the residents haven't paid attention or haven't noticed, we've got new street banners out there with their logos on them. And the banners are probably the best banners I've seen in years. So I'm really excited about them. This Sunday, Father's Day, Schumash Park, we are hosting the Foo Fighters. It's a tribute band to the Foo Fighters. And we will be honoring DIY that evening. And I think we're going to be lucky to, Mayor Buckley Weber can't make it, but Mayor Protem Sylvester will be out there to welcome the crowd. So we're really excited about that. All of our summer concerts are held on Sundays. They start at 6 o'clock. There's always food to sell from food trucks. And then the most exciting thing that we're doing this year is the community kind of spoke, the city council discussed and listened. And with the Community Services Subcommittee's support, we're actually going to be rolling out a drone show. So that'll be happening on Sunday, July 7, after the concert. So we're really excited about that. So that's our summer concert series. It's packed. I've heard from a lot of people that they've already got all the concerts calendared, and they're excited to come to them. So we're really looking forward to that. We'll thank our silver sponsors and our brown sponsors as we get more into the concert series. But you can see we've got some really big support at the bottom of the flyer there with Waste Management, the Acorn, Water District. There's a dentist office and an attorney's office and our local Crown Construction. So we're very fortunate. We've got a really good summer concert series that's supported by some really amazing businesses in town. And then the last thing I want to mention, or actually the second to last, is we've got a great summer art show on deck. On Thursday, July 11, the gallery will be opening. We are hosting four. We're doing a multi-artist art show. And these are some pretty impressive artists. So I'm hoping that the community will see this and want to come participate in it. But we're going to also have food and activities happening. We'll have a small musical entertainment. Helene Friedman is an artist who actually paints to music. So she's going to be doing kind of a demonstration that evening. So we're planning on kind of taking over the Recreation and Events Center with this great art show. Shout out to our Cultural Arts Council who's been working really hard on these art shows. So we're really excited to bring it to you. And then lastly, I don't have a, as always, summer events. We've got something fun for everyone. We've got our camps. We've got a lot of new classes. The seniors have a lot of workshops and support groups that are going on. But for the details on the event, always visit our website. Or the best thing is to actually follow us on Instagram, @CityOfAgourahills. What's not up here, as I do want to mention too, the Summer Beach Bass. That kicks off on Monday. So that's a program that's been in place for probably the better part of 40 years. Same bat channel, same pickup locations, same schedule, four round trips to Zuma daily. We're getting calls on that already. People are asking, when does it start? It's a Monday through Friday program. The schedule is on our website under our transportation programs. You can easily find it there. But, again, follow us on Instagram for any kind of updates or changes to the program. So we have an action-packed summer. On top of it, our event center is just slammed with reservations on the weekends. So we're going to be pretty busy at the Recreation and Events Center this summer. So thank you for allowing me to give you an update. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. That was excellent. It looks like another great summer in Agoura Hills. I appreciate that. Are there any reports from the city council? Okay, then we will move on to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council. If you have something-- If you have something to distribute to the city council, please do not approach the dais. Hand your item to the city clerk, and she will distribute to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley-Weber. We have not received any written public comments, nor are there any speaker cards.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the city council on the consent calendar? I see no questions, and I don't have any, so I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Mayor Protam Sylvester moves to adopt the consent calendar.
City Councilman Chris Anstead.
Thank you, and I'll now defer to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sylvester.
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, three to zero.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from staff? I'm now going to counsel staff comments. Anything? Mr. Epic, you have nothing to say? I'm going to joke with you for the next six months. Okay. Any comments from the city council? Mayor Protam Sylvester.
Yes, well, first of all, I'd like to thank not just that Mr. Epic, but this Mr. Epic, who always gets forgotten, I think. And we're so proud of you. We really are, and we appreciate all the hard work all our staff does. So thank you all so very much. I would also like to thank our mayor, Elise Buckley-Weber, because last Friday, we attended the Realtors Luncheon in Moore Park, and there was a panel discussion with all the local mayors, and I do have to say that I think our mayor was the best speaker there and was just saying how wonderful our city is, so thank you for that. And then also, last Saturday, I attended the Safety Fair that was put on by Assembly Member Jackie Irwin and our district supervisor Lindsey Horvath. It was at the New Calabasas Community Center, and I just wish more of our residents would go to these events, because this was all about safety, safety concerning wildfires, safety concerning earthquakes, and just how to prepare ourselves for what happens when an emergency comes. And it's so important that the message of ready, set, go gets out to our community. So please go to our website, look at all the links, be prepared, because the best thing any of us can do to protect not just ourselves, but also our neighbors, is to know what to do when any of these emergencies come, and they are coming. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead, anything?
Yes, I think I may wait for one comment after you finish, but I do want to, for sure, on the Epic Award, it's fantastic that we won that, and I know, I kind of know where a lot of the credit is due is to Ramiro, because I was basically initially, when we were trying to plan it out, trying to think of something different, and Ramiro would talk to me whenever I was the mayor at that time, and he'd say, oh, this is what we were thinking, and I said, no, 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 go back. You got to go back, and we needed something totally different. And you made it happen, Ramiro, and so I really want to thank you, because I thought it was just, every resident came up to all of us, I think afterwards, and said, this is the neatest thing we've ever had, and you really made whatever little vision I was offering you, you made it, run with it, and captured what I wanted to try to accomplish. And so I really want to thank you, and I know that almost 100% of the credit is due to your work to try to make that happen, so I appreciate it.
Yes, Assistant City Manager Adava.
I just wanted to, although I appreciate the credit, it really isn't one person at all, and I say that very lovingly amongst everybody. It doesn't happen without the city council's support, and it definitely doesn't happen without City Manager Hamburger. The whole team, I can imagine, I mean, we spent, we, the collective, we really spent hours upon hours putting that together, so although I appreciate it, it was not all me, it's really the whole team, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And that's sweet and very true, and we all know that, that it takes the entire village to pull off all of these events, so thank you. So I'm going to say a couple of things. I have a couple of comments, of course. I'm going to start with that the reason that our council member Jeremy Wolfe is not here, and it's good news, is that he's very proud of, well, first, he said he was very proud of the city for raising the pride flag and demonstrating a sense of inclusivity that we are trying to create in the city. But he also just had his first baby, baby boy, and it's very exciting to have somebody on the council with a brand-new baby. So congratulations to Councilmember Wolfe and his lovely wife, Sarah, and we look forward to meeting the baby soon, I hope. It'll be, before you know it, the baby will be coming into the meeting, so we'll look forward to that. And Councilmember Klein Lopez is on her way back to Agoura Hills from being out of the country, and she will be here at the next meeting. So the other thing that I wanted to talk about is, like Mayor Protam Sylvester said about the Emergency Preparedness Fair, what I walked away from that, well, two things. Number one was that they couldn't have said it more often, that you need to be prepared and evacuate early. And I think we all know and saw that when old Agoura and Agoura Hills residents evacuated early in the Woolsey Fire, it was just so much better for the entire community and the community at large. It gave more time for people from Oak Park when they got their evacuation order, which was much later in the evening. We were able to get all of our horses and pets to safety, and so I just can't stress it enough, and I'm taking that from the fire department, the sheriff's office, they must have said that 100 times on Saturday, be prepared, evacuate early. So that's what I take away from it. And the other thing that I take away from it is that the city of Agoura Hills had its mobile ops van at the fair, and it's fantastic, and it's just going to be great that we can move that thing around, because during the Woolsey Fire, we had to keep evacuating from place to place, and this is just going to keep everybody in one spot, so it's really exciting. The other thing I wanted to say is I want to make a couple of comments. I'm sure you all heard that the 80th Anniversary of Normandy just passed, and, you know, watching all the different stories, you know, the press always talks about the, you know, storming of the beaches by the Allied forces, the United States, Canada, and Great Britain, that it was the beginning of the end of the war. But I like to say with something far more important than that, because those forces that came in and all those troops, they stopped the hate that was going on in the world in Europe by Hitler and his Nazis, and it was the hate of not only the Jews, but the LGBTQ community, and they called them gypsies back at the time, we called them unhoused communities, people who just, it was just a horrible, horrible time, and I couldn't be prouder. I went to Normandy last year, and to see how difficult that operation was was incredibly moving and impressive. And so I thank all of those troops. I know there's not many who are still alive. I heard one of them got married this last weekend, but to their families who also sacrificed. We lost so many troops in the storming of Normandy, but we did it, and with the help of our, and also the partnership, which we all talk about, the partnership between Great Britain and Canada and the United States is something that hopefully, working together as allies, whether it's on the city level, whether it's on the country's level, or it's on the international level, we couldn't have done it alone. So just as Mr. Adava was just saying, it takes a huge team, so to stop that kind of, you know, hatred and march that Hitler was going through Europe. So with that, I know that Councilmember Anstead also wants to say something about the 80th Anniversary, so please do.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what I'd like to say is, first of all, I think the name of the greatest generation kind of goes to the generation that fought in World War II, and it has been 80 years, and as Mayor Buckley-Weber mentioned, a lot of the troops and the people that supported that war have been passing away, and not very many of those troops are remaining alive. And I just want to recognize them for serving our country and the world in that endeavor. And I think the thing also is, the leadership that the United States possessed in not allowing that to continue, to Hitler to continue, is something that we need to all, I think, take in and contemplate, and the leadership that we had, General Eisenhower was the Allied Commander of that. And actually, one of the personal things on the Eisenhower, General Eisenhower went to undergraduate, where I went to school, at West Point, and one of the buildings is named Eisenhower Hall. The reason why I bring it up is because that's actually where I asked my wife to marry me, is in Eisenhower Hall. And so Dwight D. Eisenhower is somebody that I definitely emulate, and the great leadership that we had then, but also, and more importantly, was the great soldiers that we had that actually executed all the plans that the leaders developed. And so I really want to thank the greatest generation for giving everything that they have, and thousands of troops were killed that day. And I think the one thing that I want to say from the podium is, it makes me extremely upset whenever I hear of politicians or others saying that people that have passed away aren't heroes, they're all heroes, whether they survived or passed away that day, and I truly want to remember all of them. So thank you for giving me a couple minutes.
Thank you, and I agree, they all were heroes. To even have the guts to do that is just amazing. And so then with, yes, you may, of course.
Just to follow up, coming from a different perspective, of course, because I was born in England, so we appreciated everything that, when the Americans finally came in to help, but I would also, this anniversary always also reminds me of my father-in-law. He served on Eisenhower's staff in London in aerial reconnaissance, and they did a lot to try and make it a success. So in memory of my father-in-law, Louis Sylvester, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. And then, I hate to end on a sad note, but this is a sad note. Tonight, our city attorney is Travis Caya, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, because sadly, our city attorney Candace Lee's father passed away very suddenly this last weekend, so I would like to, in his memory and honor, I would like to close tonight's meeting, and we will do something more formal, if that's all right with Ms. Lee when she gets back. So for now, we will close the meeting in his memory, and, you know, may he rest in peace, and may Candace and her family get through this as well as anybody can get through it. So with that, if I can have a motion and a second to adjourn, I would appreciate it.
This is City Councilmember Chris Anstead making the motion to adjourn the meeting in memory of Candace's father. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam Sylvester seconds.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call?
Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sylvester.
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, three to zero.
Thank you. And our next meeting is scheduled for June 26, 2024, in the Council Chambers of the Civic Center at 6:00 PM, located at 3,001 Ladyface Court, Agoura Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned.